Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a regular city council meeting for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. We'll start off this evening with a call for, called order by the mayor, myself, and then a pledge of allegiance. So if you would join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States and the republic, for which it stands as one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is roll call by the city clerk.
Doug Glassell.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
J. David Reed.
Present.
Anthony Russo is absent. All other city council members are present.
Thank you. Mayor Protam, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are two. We would like to add item 8A, an interview with Planning Commission alternate candidate, Tina McFarland, and we will be deleting item number 17, and I would like to ask our senior planner, Amy Sharp, to come forward and explain the reasoning behind that.
Hello, thank you. So as you mentioned, this project is not going to be heard tonight. It will actually be reheard by the Planning Commission due to an error in the public noticing description that was done for the initial August 25th Planning Commission meeting. At that time, the initial public notice stated this property was located at Ogden Road and Pavilion Drive, and the correct description is actually Ogden Road and Bridges Drive. So for that reason, that we are going to have the Planning Commission hearing again on Wednesday, September 22nd at 5:00 PM, and that has been renoticed today as well.
Alright, thank you. The next item on our agenda is Suicide Month, and we're going to do a proclamation on the Suicide Month, and, or Suicide Prevention Month, and Greg Fisher?
Thank you to the Montrose Town Council. Suicide is a public health issue, yet many are still afraid to talk about it. It is time to take action to make sure that your constituents know suicide prevention and education matter. As many know, I say this as our community has been devastated by suicide, especially in the last eighteen months. I stand here today, less than a month after a sixteen-year-old boy in the San Miguel region took his own life. To normalize mental health topics and increase suicide awareness, Tri-County Health Network is asking your government to pass this proclamation proclaiming September as Suicide Prevention Month. To further bring awareness to suicide prevention, Tri-County Health Network will be hosting events and providing resources to our community members. These events include mental health first aid courses, suicide prevention talks, as well as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention Out of the Darkness Walk on September 26th in the Telluride Town Park. This walk will raise funds not only for the National Suicide Prevention Organization, but will also fund our local efforts for prevention and education programs that we do here in Montrose. Tri-County also has our teletherapy program, as well as our behavioral health directory that we want to be accessible and known to all community members that are looking for help at this time. We would like to thank the Montrose County Government and our entire coverage area for taking the time to do this and help our residents recognize that they are not alone when dealing with mental health crises. We also encourage people to take more time to visit tchnetwork.org, or call our main office at 970-708-7096 for more resources or trying to find assistance if you're dealing with a crisis. Thank you for joining us in this fight to end stigma around mental health and create a suicide safer community.
Thank you. If you'd like to, Greg, come up here. I'm going to read the proclamation. It's National Suicide Prevention Month, September 2021. Whereas suicide remains the tenth leading cause of death in the United States, and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of ten and thirty-four. Whereas in the United States, over forty-seven thousand people died by suicide in 2019, which is about one death every eleven minutes. Whereas suicide is the only leading cause of death in the United States that has increased every year for the past decade. Whereas it is estimated that in 2019, there were over 1.4 million suicide attempts. Whereas in 2019, suicide was the leading cause of death in Colorado. Whereas in 2019, 1,312 people died by suicide. Whereas over ninety percent of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition, although often the condition is not recognized or treated. Whereas organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and the Tri-County Health Network are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost someone to suicide, who struggle, and urge that we recognize suicide as a preventable national, state, and local public health problem, and declare suicide prevention to be a priority. Acknowledge that no single suicide prevention program or effort will be appropriate for all populations and communities. Address the disparity in access to mental health care for underrepresented groups and advocate for the ending of disparities. Fund new suicide research to support culturally informed and evidence-based mental health care and services, and promote awareness that there is no single cause for suicide, that suicide most often occurs when sensors exceed the coping abilities of someone struggling with mental health conditions. Develop and implement strategies to improve and increase accessibility to quality mental health, substance use, and suicide prevention services and programs. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as National Suicide Prevention Month in the City of Montrose. In witness whereof, I have here undue set my hand and cause to be affixed to the facial seal of the City of Montrose this day of the September 2021. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is the call for public comment for non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment this evening? Alright, do we have anybody online? The next item on our agenda is a consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is youth council, youth city council applicant interviews. And the first individual we would like to interview this evening is Gunnison Clamp. Would you please come forward and state your name?
Hello, my name is Gunnison Clamp.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in the youth council?
Yeah, absolutely. So I've been on the youth council for two years in the past, signed up wanting a little more of an experience in sort of local government and being involved with youth and providing new opportunities for them through the city, and I found that and so much more. It's been a really rewarding experience. I've had a great time, so applying for a third year.
Okay. Barbara, you have a question?
Sure. Good evening, Gunnison. What do you think is one of the biggest challenges or issues facing youth in our community today?
Well, I think, of course, one of the biggest, I think, is the one, just did the proclamation on suicide and trying to prevent that. I think that's only something that, as stated, has become worse in the past years. Of course, that ties in a lot of mental health. We've done some events in the past, you know, providing a sort of, sort of escape for youth, you know, getting them, you know, other things to do and ways to be productive and have fun and live a healthy lifestyle. So I think just in general, mental health that affects suicide, it's one of the biggest issues we have here, and especially with, you know, as stated, the past sixteen, eighteen months, lots of people having to stay indoors, you know, potentially damaging to some people's mental health as well. So I think that's a big issue that especially now, like, should be considered and needs addressing. I think, you know, Montrose offers so many good and expanding opportunities for recreation, for fun activities, that I really think there are a lot of different things we can do to provide good opportunities for, for youth to find an escape from those mental health problems and even a cure for them as well.
Thank you.
David?
Gunnison, you've served on youth city council for a couple of years now, so what would you hope to learn by being on the council again?
Well, so each year, you know, it's a little bit of the same things, but also a lot of different things as well. I think one thing that excites me each year, that I can learn each year, is new people that join the council each year. Every year, it's a slightly different group of people on the council, so every year you have to adapt to working with a new group of people and finding the best ways to get great things done. So I think, you know, something that's rolled from my first year of council till now is just learning each year how to communicate with new people and, you know, just how to make the dynamic of the council the best it can possibly be. And, yeah, I think that's one of the biggest things. I, of course, looking to, look forward to learning more about the local government as well. You know, I kind of learn something new about the workings every time I come to a city council meeting, so, yeah, a couple of different things I'm looking forward to, to learning this year.
David?
Good evening. First of all, let me thank you for your service for the last two years. Obviously, it's probably been pretty rewarding to you since you're coming back for a third time, and we appreciate that. I guess I would ask you, and you've been around the community a lot in your two years having previously served, gives you some insight that perhaps people, other people your age don't necessarily have about the community, but based on your experience and your experience over the last two years, what would you say is the one thing that you think is important for this community to change? And I'm talking about all citizens across the board.
Right. Well, when I'm asked this question, I always, you know, there's always one thing I say I wouldn't change. That's the friendly attitude of everyone in town. As for what I would change, part of it does have to do with just relating to what we spoke about earlier with mental health and, you know, suicide prevention, different things like that, because that's such a big issue here. I think one thing we can really improve on is, you know, letting people know there are services for that sort of thing right here in town. We do have some good facilities for that sort of thing, like Tri-County Health that just presented here, so I think just one big thing we can do is just raise awareness for those, for those causes, and for what can be done about those. And if it's something more serious, maybe help people find resources on a, on a state level or some other thing like that. But in general, just I think, communication in the community, letting everybody know that whatever you might struggle with, there's a service in the community for that, most likely, and if there's not, can make people aware of services elsewhere. So I guess, I guess that's probably my best answer for something I'd change here, because I know a lot of those things, I see those places, there are great services for mental health and things like that, but I don't see them advertised or out there a lot, so I think just communicating that more, more would help.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have another question? I would like to thank you, and thank you for the past years you've helped out with us.
Absolutely, it's been my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Amy Scriffany? Hopefully I got that correct. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself and your name?
Yes, my name is Amy Scriffany. I'm a sophomore at Montrose High School, and this is my first year applying for Montrose City Council, or Youth Council.
Well, if you're eighteen, you can apply for this job too. Barbara, do you have a question?
Hi, good evening, welcome. If you were appointed to the youth city council, how would you reach out to your peers? And what I mean by that is a lot of times the work that youth city council does is providing information and/or inviting and encouraging their peers to participate in events, so how do you think is the best and most effective way to reach out to your peers?
So I think a pretty common one would be school. Reach out to different schools, have the information there, but I think the biggest one and the most effective one would be reaching out through social media.
David?
So what do you think is your best attribute as far as why you should be on youth city council?
I think one of my biggest attributes is my leadership skills.
Read on that just a little bit?
Yes, I've been in, I've been involved in many different organizations and have had many different roles, and I just believe that I've helped as many people as I could through those roles with my leadership skills, and I think I could bring that to youth city council.
David?
Good evening and welcome. My question to you tonight would be, what do you think is the biggest challenge slash issue facing youth in our community today?
I think the biggest challenge slash issue facing the youth in our community today is the single parent families.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person on our list is Sebastian Simkins. Pardon?
Mayor Glassell, Sebastian Simkins, and Kayden Rhodes were unable to join us this evening.
And Kayden Rhodes, not here. And Jasmine Hemingway. If you could, state your name and give us a little information about yourself.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Hemingway, and I am a freshman at the high school.
Barbara, would you have a question?
Well, my first question is, I, do you have an older sister, at least one, because you look really familiar, who was really involved in like theater and stuff? Does that sound familiar?
Oh, yes, my older sister is Jennifer Hemingway.
Okay, fantastic. Sorry, I just had to see if I could connect some dots. Can you tell us a little bit more about why you want to serve on the Montrose Youth City Council?
When I first heard about the youth city council, I was interested in it because I wanted to be more involved with my community as it is, because I find things like this very interesting and intriguing, and I enjoy partaking in community services and such.
David?
Can you give us an example of a time when you worked with someone whose opinion differed from your own?
Of course. One time when I was in middle school, we were assigned two teams of three, and I was assigned with somebody who I disliked, and they were often mean to me, but I had found a way to come to an agreement with them by, you know, finding common ground and making a better understanding between us so we could work and get our schoolwork done on time.
David, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. My fellow council members have asked you some pretty direct questions, and I'm going to ask you an esoteric one, and that would be, what inspires you to take action in order to make change?
Things that inspire me to make change in people are like things, things that make me want to help them improve and help me improve, and especially when I see something that's causing, you know, distraught or pain in between other people or problems in general, I think I want to help them and help them improve and become better people as well to help fix problems.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Indica Taylor? If you would, state your name and give us a little information about yourself.
I'm Indica Taylor, and I am a freshman at the Montrose High School, and this will be my first time even hearing about youth city council.
Thank you, Barbara.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for coming tonight and for applying for youth city council. And I know you're just learning about it, but can you tell us an activity or an opportunity for youth that you'd like to see the youth city council organize?
Maybe group activities amongst our youth, like the high school or like the middle schools, like field days, things like that, at maybe the rec center, either of them, because I feel our youth isn't as connected to our city maybe as much as we should be, and that's something we could work past by organizing things like that.
Thanks.
Dave?
If you're appointed to youth city council, how would you reach out to your peers?
At school, using social media. Mostly at school. I think a school would, at school would be a major one because, well, most of us go to school, and most of us go there to learn, so learning about things in our community at school would definitely be a big thing that we could take home, mull over, and then come back and make a decision about.
David?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. What do you think is the biggest challenge issue facing youth in our community today?
Definitely what we touched base on about suicide prevention and mental health, because I know it's hard to talk about those things personally. I have friends who don't think it's okay to talk about those things, but it's natural. All of us face bumps in life, all of us face difficult things that we need to talk about eventually, because we're all human here. It's just emotion, and we need to get it out. It's definitely a big thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Like to thank the young folks who are participating in this, and you can certainly feel free if you have other things you need to do this evening. If you'd like to leave, you certainly may.
Kayla, were you going to give us any kind of final, like, were you going to say something? Oh, okay. Oh, good. Thanks a lot for coming, you guys. Really appreciate taking time out of your evening and coming and talking to us. It's really exciting to hear that you guys are interested in serving your community. I think for many of the same reasons that we are serving our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine on our agenda this evening is a resolution, 2021-17. Oh, I forgot, yes, we do. We have one of the additions tonight is item 8A, and it's an interview for the Planning Commission. Do we have?
Yes, Mayor Glassell, Tina McFarland is here for a brief interview by city council.
Alright, would you please come forward? If you would, state your name, tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Tina McFarland, and I am originally from Montrose, Colorado. I lived in Denver for the past thirty-six years and recently moved back to Montrose to call home. I've started a business here, and I'm very interested in giving back to my community. I was involved in legislative work up in Denver, working with bills and working with senators, and I'm just very interested in all of the growth that's going on in Montrose because I can't believe it after being gone for thirty-six years. It's just incredible, and so I want to be part of that and understand what's going on.
Alright. Barbara, do you have any questions?
Sure, thank you, welcome, and thanks for being here this evening. Can you tell me what kind of pressing issues and elaborate a little on the growth that we are going to be faced with the help of Planning Commission in the next immediate one to three years?
I understand there's lots of growth in talking with Mr. Matt Miles and a lot of other individuals throughout Montrose, so I think infrastructure is going to be one of those large ones, is how are you going to deal with a lot of the traffic through Main Street and Townsend, since it's, used to be our old cruising strip back in the day. It probably still is, but anyway. So I think the infrastructure is going to be one of those things that's going to be needing to be looked at. Also, are additional schools being planned with all the growth that's coming and all the homes that are being built? Do we have adequate resources for all those homes?
Okay. David?
One of the things that people struggle with on Planning Commission is that is it a very structured group, and there are a lot of information and a lot of background and a lot of legislation, rules, code, et cetera? Are you willing to put in the time to learn all of that in order to make wise decisions?
Absolutely. I sit on the CAI Board, which is the Colorado Common, it's been, it's like the Colorado Common Interest Ownership Act, so it's the Community Association Institute, so I'm very familiar with putting in the necessary time and work to understand particular bills to help them, get them passed, and talk with the particular individuals that are carrying those bills, so absolutely.
David, do you have a question?
Just a very brief one, but good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
I guess the question I have is, if you were appointed to the Planning Commission, we all know there's a lot of growth going on in the community, as you have spoken to, and there are a lot of different opinions about development and how development should occur, and we are guided as a council and as a commission by not only our ordinances, zoning, et cetera, but also by our comprehensive plan, our master plan. And so you have to read those two in conjunction with each other, one being a vision, one being the law. Would you have any problem sitting up here as a planning commissioner, dealing with issues that you knew were very, very important to your neighbors, but you might disagree with when you apply the comprehensive plan and when you apply our laws? How would you react to that?
I don't think I would have a problem with it if, if you get to know me, I'm a person that speaks my mind, and you've got to look at the pros and cons of both things, how it's going to impact a community, not just the community as a whole, but the neighborhood as a community for the planning. And so I think it's working collaboratively together with individuals and helping other individuals that don't really see the big picture, help them, guide them a little bit, and help explain them a little bit about the changes that are coming forth with.
Thank you.
You know, you haven't been here very long. Here recently, have you had an opportunity to sit in on any of the planning meetings or have a chance to review our comprehensive plan at all?
I have not. I've looked over brief information, and I was introduced by Delphine to the Planning Commission, so I have gone online and looked at some different, different information, but I'm willing to do that as well to expand my knowledge.
And we do a fair amount of training also with that program. Do you have any difficulty in, if we have a training evening and things like that?
I do not. I don't have any small children at home, not that I'm opposed to young children. I have grandparent, grandchildren of my own, but they live in Grand Junction, so I just have the dog, so I'm good with that. dog, so I'm good with that.
Any other?
I have a four-legged baby.
Any other questions, Barbara? Dave, David? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, too. Item nine on the agenda this evening is a resolution 2021-17. City Council considering a resolution 2021-17, resolution authorizing the filing of the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, a grant application for the Gray and Black Market Marijuana Enforcement Grant Program. Kendall Kramer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'm here tonight to present to you for your consideration a resolution authorizing the filing of a grant application with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs to opt into the grant program for the Gray and Black Market Marijuana Enforcement Grant. This program was created by a state statute funded through the Marijuana Tax Cash Fund. The purpose is to provide local municipalities assistance on an annual basis to local law enforcement and district attorneys for the investigation and prosecution of costs associated with unlicensed marijuana cultivation here in Colorado or distribution operations. This grant covers personnel, overtime, contractual services, equipment and supplies, travel, pre-trial incarceration, medical expenses related to injury or exposure, investigation, purchase of information and evidence, et cetera. A resolution to opt into this program is required. The resolution before you tonight authorizes the filing of the grant application with DOLA, acknowledges that we will spend appropriately and report on a quarterly basis, acknowledges the Tabor implications for the city, which there are none as city grants were debruced, and that city grant revenue was debruced in 2006, excuse me, and authorizes the city manager to execute a grant contract upon an award. We have received funds from this program in the past. In 2018, we received around $69,000. 2019, $81,000. And then in 2020, 2020, excuse me, funding was drastically cut due to COVID-19, and we received about $10,000. Due to COVID-19, again, that program was cut. However, there are increases expected for fiscal year 2021 to 2022, so we might receive a few more dollars for this next round. Again, we've received these funds in the past. They've been used for drug task force wages, investigating black market marijuana cases, and the purchase of equipment for such investigations. The funding round was announced in August due to the quick turnaround. That's why this was on the work session this morning and here before you tonight. And the grant application is September 17th for this grant. With that, I'll take any questions. Thank you very much.
All right. Barbara, do you have a question?
I do not have any questions on that.
Dave? David? All right. Thank you very much, Kendall.
Thank you.
I will accept public comment if there's anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on this item. If not, I'll take a motion.
Second.
I've got a motion in two seconds. Please vote. That passes unanimously with one absentee. Yes. Item 10, Ordinance 2553 from the first reading. The City Council consideration of Ordinance 2553 on first reading and ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, repealing and replacing Title V, Chapter 3 of the Facial Code of the City of Montrose. Staff Attorney Stephen Alcorn.
The city clerks came to me a couple months ago and asked me about the necessity of 5-3, the police alarms section of the code. Section 5-3-1 is license required, that it shall be unlawful for any person to install or maintain a police alarm system in the city without first having obtained a police alarm system contractor's license. This requirement shall not apply to persons who sell systems but do not install or maintain them, nor to persons that install and maintain their own systems. So it first became part of the code in April of 1988. The code was, for this section was updated in 2003, again in 2012. After discussion with the Police Department, the Building Department, and the Planning Department, or the clerks, it became, seems like the requirement no longer serves a purpose. It's become an unnecessary burden on both the applicants and the clerk's office. Though there may be more cities in the state that require police alarm installers licenses, I was only able to identify two, Colorado Springs and Trinidad. Longmont and Fort Collins requires fire alarm installers be permitted, but they are silent as to police. Our city has long had a policy that we want to make sure our ordinance serve a legitimate person's purpose. If they don't, frankly, we probably shouldn't have them. So it is my recommendation on behalf of the clerk's office and the Police Department and the building that we consider amending the code to remove the specific licensing requirement.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
David? I have no questions. I think we heard a lot about this in work session, and I'm convinced.
I would agree.
All right. I'll hold a hearing on this one. I'll open the hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to remark on this ordinance? Now I see none. We have none online. Close the hearing. I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass Ordinance 2553 on first reading as presented.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously with one absentee. Item 11 is an ordinance first reading on 2554. Ordinance of City of Montrose, Colorado vacating a portion of right-of-way within the City of Montrose. Staff Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a while since we discussed at work session. The applicant ended up pursuing a cleanup annexation also, so we decided to work with planning and envelop these together. So this is the first on a couple of items you'll hear on Riverbend RV Park tonight. Let me screen share to give you a map and orient you to the area here. So this is the Riverbend RV Park, which is across the Unco-pagory River from Target. So in this picture here, Target is on your right. Back in 2009, this area was experiencing some septic failures. Through that, they did some sewer line extensions and annexed into the city. At the time they annexed into the city, the city had a vision for a river pathway coming from Trupita Park, running along the river here and up, connecting to the Unco-pagory Riverway Trail, which currently runs along the old rail bed. At the time, you know, they wanted to secure the right-of-way so that if that were to come to fruition, that would, the right-of-way would be secured. So what you see on this red line here is the old right-of-way that was previously secured back in 2009. Fast forward to now, the Riverbend RV Park has a different owner. They're looking to update their RV park permit and kind of solidify and legitimize a lot of the uses and future vision for the project. So as part of that, it's prompted discussions of just how viable this route is and if that's the one that makes the most sense. And through that, we've determined that from a practical standpoint and for multiple tuedo reasons, which I'll go into, that this is probably a better trail connection for a couple reasons. One is we, this is now a city park. Originally in 2009, this wasn't a city park, but it was part of the land exchange for the Sero Summit Fishing Eastment. The city acquired this as Trupita Park, or Trupita Lake Park, I can't remember the exact name of it, but with that, we have trailhead parking here. And so right now, people trying to get on the Unco-pagory Riverway Trail, but it's so hard to pull off of Trupita here, it's such a small area, that this is a lot safer option for users. Obviously, Trupita Lake is a destination. And then we're also talking about future extensions of the trail alongside Trupita Road here up to Cobble Drive to support Cobble Creek and some of the new hub development. And so with that, and then, you know, and people come down naturally to know to detour ahead of time, which this would have to cross other private properties that we haven't acquired, and there's a pretty good grade drop here. Felt it's a lot more practical for them to come down and have the natural progression into this city asset here. With that, the owner has been open to doing a right-of-way exchange. Right now, we do not have the right-of-way to make this blue, the darker blue connection. This is kind of part of a larger exchange that if we were to vacate these, which are kind of developed upland areas of the park, they would give us the right-of-way necessary to both legitimize this old Trupita Trail, which only has half of the right-of-way, and then also allow room for a rec trail. For them, they intend to kind of legitimize what our current RV use is already along developed upland areas of the site. The city is looking to maintain and keep the portions of the right-of-way that was dedicated within the Unco-pagory River itself. That's for recreational purposes, so if someone were to tube or boat through there and stop and take a rest, or if someone's waiting and fishing, they wouldn't be trespassing on private property. So we're only trading up the, are trading out the upland portions which are already developed as an upland area. So this ordinance is what facilitates that vacation. Separate from that, we have an MOU with the landowner that outlines kind of the process for the land swap. It ends up being a straight trade to gain the right-of-way where we want it and give up the right-of-way where we don't want it. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Barbara?
I do not have any questions.
Dave?
No.
I do have one. Scott, where that existing small parking area is, or Trupita where the trail crosses, will that go away once we get these others set up? Or what's the, you have any idea of a feel for what that might be?
We haven't designed that yet. The hope is to keep or possibly even expand that when we do that project. So these two will probably be kind of a standalone project together that'll go from Trupita Lake all the way up to Cobble Drive, both trailed and improvement, hopefully improvement of that parking area. But we haven't gotten deep enough into the available right-of-way and how that would all lay out yet to know for sure.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? I'll hold a hearing, so I'll open a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to speak to this item? No one on the audience, no one online. And I'll close the hearing, and I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for passage of Ordinance 2554 on first reading as presented.
Well, second thought? I have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously with one absent. On that same subject, we have the Riverbend RV Park Addition Number Two Annexation. City Council will hold a hearing on the annexation of Riverbend RV Park Addition Number Two. Senior Planner Amy Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to share my screen here a moment. So you guys have seen this one a few times, so I'll go through my presentation a little quicker than I normally do. We had the work session back in July, and today's the first reading. Planning Commission also had their zoning hearing back in August. Scott kind of already mentioned the location of this RV park in general terms. This is a cleanup annexation, so this is just a piece of property that was left over and never annexed, so we're bringing that into compliance by annexing it prior to doing a greater overall plan for future development of the RV park. As you can see on this map, the surrounding area in most, in all the park is currently B2 Highway Commercial District, and that is what the applicant is proposing for this property as well. It's B2. This slide just gives you an overview of what's allowed in the B2 Highway Commercial District. This is consistent with what is being provided at this park and what they propose to do in the future as well. This map just shows the annexation map. As you can see, it's a really small slither of property. On the previous slide, it showed this as well, it's about .26 acres in size. In our comprehensive plan, this is designated as a public area, so it can be used for a variety of purposes, and RV parks fits in with that as well. This is located in Growth Area 1, where it's the most cost-efficient areas for the city to grow. And as you saw on the previous maps, it is almost completely surrounded by city limits. The area is urbanizing and beats the one sixth contiguous to city limits. An annexation agreement is not required, nor was an annexation impact report. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this back on August 11th, and we find that it does meet all of our comprehensive plan and city annexation policies, and therefore staff is recommending approval of both the annexation and the B2 Highway Commercial District. With that, I'll open it to any questions.
All right. Anyone have a question? We've discussed this several times before.
We have. I don't have any.
In that case, we're going to have a resolution of fact findings of the Riverbend RV Park Addition Two. I will accept public comments if anybody has a comment on that. I see none. In that case, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-18 as presented.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously with one absent. The next item is Ordinance 2555, City Council considering an Ordinance 2555 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado for the annexation of the Riverbend RV Park Addition Two. And I believe you've pretty well covered that. I will open a public hearing. Is there anyone who has a comment on that? We have no one in the audience and no one online. I'll close the hearing. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass Ordinance 2555 on first reading as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously with one absent. The next item on our agenda this evening is Ordinance 2556 on first reading. City Council consider Ordinance 2556 on first reading and ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, providing for zoning of the Riverbend RV Park Addition Two as a B2 Highway Commercial District. Senior Planner Amy Sharp.
My presentation will be the same as what I just gave, so I have nothing further to add.
All right. Any questions? I'll open a public hearing. Does anyone have a comment? We have no comments. I'll close the hearing, and I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance 2556 on first reading as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously with one absent. The next item on our agenda is Resolution 2021-19. City Council consideration of Resolution 2021-19, setting October 19, 2021, as a hearing date for the annexation of the McCracken Addition. Senior Planner Amy Sharp.
Thank you once again, Mayor and City Council. Here's the annexation schedule for this one. This one was brought to you for work session about three weeks ago, so I'll do a little bit more on this one, but you have heard it before, so just refresh your memory a little bit on it. This property is located just east of the Unco-pagory River, it's west of Highway 50, south of Industrial Drive, and north of North Grand Avenue. So this property is 2.295 acres in size. As you can see here, it's got like a rectangular shape, and then it's got a really small slither of property that heads out to the east near the highway. It is within our urban growth boundary and city water and city sewer service area. You can see here, too, it's almost completely surrounded by city limits, the area that's kind of great out there, with the exception of some property to the west and the south is still within the county. An annexation agreement is required for this one, and annexation for this property will allow for just future development of the parcel, as well as connection to city utilities, was the primary driver for this one. As you can see from this map, the zoning of the surrounding area is I2 General Industrial District, some P Public District, and then the area that's in the county is agricultural, and their proposed zoning is B3 General Commercial District. As you can see here, the B3 General Commercial District is intended for a large variety of uses that require large storage areas to conveniently serve customers, and that's what the applicant is requesting at this time for his purposes. This is the annexation map that shows the parcel to be annexed. In our comprehensive plan, this is listed as an employment center. In our comprehensive plan, this is listed as an employment center, which also fits in with his proposed use for this property. It will bring more employment to the area. This is located both in Growth Area One and Two, so the area that's the rectangular piece that kind of runs north and south is in one area, and then the area that's kind of that runs east and west is also in a different growth area, but they're both nearby to city utility services. As I mentioned, this is just a recap of what I already covered. An annexation impact report is not required, as this is less than 10 acres. We will be recommending approval of the annexation and the zoning that's being requested, and this will go to Planning Commission on September 22nd. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Any questions, Council?
So the access to this is kind of becoming along that long sliver of land from the east?
Correct.
David, do you have any questions? I think again, this is one we've covered in the work sessions a couple times. I will accept any public comment. I see none. We have nobody online, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2021-19 as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. That passes unanimously with one absent. Next item, item 15, is the Bear Creek Subdivision Amendment Number Four Preliminary Platte. Amy Sharp, our senior planner, would you care to go over that one for us?
Sure thing. So we'll switch from annexations to some new subdivisions for something a little different here. Okay, there. All right, so this project is intended to renew the remaining unbuilt portions of the Bear Creek subdivision. This project is located south of Lincoln Road, it's north of Lilac Road, east of 6530 Road, and west of 6600 Road. This contains approximately 81 acres, so it shows a lot of area here, but it's the area that's just outlined in red. As you can see here, the area within here is zoned R3A Medium High Density District, and there's also some areas that are zoned R5 Low Density Manufactured Housing District. This plat is proposing to build 282 single-family lots. So this just shows an overview of our subdivision process. This is coming before you as an amended preliminary plat, so this is the fourth time this plat has actually been amended over the years. And so, as I mentioned, this is just meant to renew the remaining unbuilt portions that are within this subdivision. According to our subdivision review standards, these are all the criteria that have to be met before they can bring it to us and have it come to Planning Commission and City Council for approval, and these are the things that we check to make sure that the plat is in conformance with before we bring them to you. I'll make note that our comprehensive plan and municipal code are two documents that we refer to when looking at subdivisions. The comprehensive plan is not a legally binding document, but it does provide guidance for zoning and other land use decisions, and it is possible for sections of our comprehensive plan to conflict at times, and it's reasonable to note that a decision may not satisfy every single aspect outlined within the comprehensive plan. The future land use map within the comprehensive plan also illustrates some general but somewhat flexible locations and extents for various land uses and densities, and municipal code and zoning regulations is a little bit different in that it specifies land uses and densities, bulk and height requirements, setbacks, and other development standards that are allowed within each zoning district, and those are things that we also check for when looking at the different lot sizes. Development on this parcel may occur in accordance with the approved zoning and also should be in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. So in our future land use map, this is actually listed as residential mixed density low and also residential mixed density medium. This fits in nicely with how it is currently zoned and what the proposed use is as well for this property. This is in your packet, so I won't read through all of these, but this talks about what's allowed in these different zoning districts, and this proposal is a use by right in this zoning district. Next is the first page of the plat. This shows all the different plat notes and certificates that are required on a preliminary plat. These are the different plat notes that talk about privately owned park space and open improvements, drainage and irrigation districts, and other general things that we've put on all of our, most of our preliminary plats. They vary a little bit from plat to plat, but those are basic plats that are on all of them. This map, and I believe the next slide as well, is going to show you the layout of all the lots, and so you can see how all of those are going to come into play, as well as any new roads that are going to be constructed as part of this subdivision. And then it kind of carried over to the next page, so you'll see here the southern portion is all of the subdivision that's been completed, and then there's still a little bit remaining to the north to be done. This map shows the different phases for development, starting in the southeast corner, working to the northwest. Staff finds that the preliminary plat is in compliance with our subdivision regulations as well as our comprehensive plan. The proposal is, does meet the intent of the zoning districts. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this preliminary plat back on August 25th, and we will be recommending again conditional approval of this preliminary plat. We ask that you put this standard condition in your motion. This is something we put on all of our preliminary plats. With that, I'll open it up to any questions, or it looks like Scott's available here too, so I don't know if he has anything to add to this one as well.
Murrow, do you have any questions?
I do have a question. So when we're doing, you mentioned this is the Fourth Amendment. Do, does that happen because the developer changes what they, how they want it laid out, and so they amend and amend, or do they do that because the five years that they would need to change this preliminary plat into a final plat runs out? Or can you explain a little bit why we're on a Fourth Amendment?
Sure. It varies from project to project, and it can be any of those reasons above. This one tonight is actually due to they're proposing to change all the multifamily lots into single-family lots, and that is allowed in their, this was part of an original plan development, and so in the plan development, it allowed for either or, and so since they're changing it to just single-family lots, that was one of the reasons for this amendment as well.
So if a developer brought a preliminary plat, and they said, "I'm going to have the streets and the houses laid out like this," but then they change their mind, they come back to us again and say, "Here's a different version I now want to go through."
Right, so sometimes they may change the lot layout, lot sizes, and different configurations, and that's what would change, and I think Scott will know a whole lot more history on this one specifically, since he's been around during a lot of these.
Maybe that's a great segue to my next question, which is, I don't think this is something that we've seen recently, so my guess is that the developer did a preliminary plat a while ago, and then sat on it and waited to see how he wanted to develop it? Is that true? What's the history here?
One of those, one of the things that affect that is also the sellout of the lots, so sometimes their termination of their five-year period means that the lots haven't sold at the rate they thought they would, so that may be also a factor in sometimes why these happen.
David, do you have any comment? Mr. Murphy?
Yes, Scott, will you talk a little bit too about sometimes how there are those outlots as part of a preliminary plat maybe, and then they don't get platted right away into individual conveyable lots? I think that'll be a part of your answer, but if you could, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, and this is a, I think this is a great example of how the system was designed to work. So yeah, they're, they're changing their lots, but they're also are up kind of upon their five-year renewal. So in my time here, we've seen two of the five-year renewals. You know, a lot of times they'll do a preliminary plat for the entire piece, and then throughout, once that preliminary plat's approved, they can do small filings on it. So I think if you remember over the last couple of years, we've had, you know, filings, I think four, five, and six on Bear Creek, and each one of those has been a block or two, and so they kind of build it out. So that way they don't have to go through the entire process every time they build out a block or two. And then yeah, sometimes they'll just leave kind of the north 40 if they don't have a plan for it yet, they'll leave that as an outlot, and then come in with a second preliminary plat for that area if necessary. But yeah, the reason for the five-year thing, some of the kind of zooming out a little bit driver behind that in the code is it allows, you know, if we don't want someone to come in and do a subdivision 50 years ago at codes that were present 50 years ago, and then forever have the right to just go and build that whenever they decide to, because the codes change, the regulations that govern us change, and this is a textbook example of why that's in place. So, you know, the last renewal four, four or five years ago, we were able to update a lot of the drainage and paving standards to modern, to modernize, we were able to update the traffic study, things of that sort that help us, you know, because traffic counts 20 years ago were obviously different than today. So every time this plat comes up for renewal, it's a chance to make sure that it meets modern codes in place at the time and is still matching what's going on on the ground. So this is kind of along those veins, and yeah, it's worked well for us to, to understand that, you know, like in this case, traffic and drainage patterns, and get those updated in this system, and just set us up for a lot better result going forwards.
Thank you.
Scott, when do they put the utilities in? Is that in this phase now, or have they already had some of those in place?
Yeah, so the preliminary plat includes the infrastructure plans for everything that they're preliminary plating. So in this case, you know, the entire northern half of the subdivision, which hasn't been final platted yet, we review and go through all those infrastructure plans. If approved, that preliminary plat authorizes them to go into construction, and usually they'll do it according to that sequencing plan. So I think right now they're working on filing six from the previous preliminary plat, because it's still valid, and kind of marching their way towards the northwest. So they are authorized to go to construction. Once construction is complete on that given filing, they would come in with a final plat for that portion of it. So what Amy showed is the phasing map, more or less will kind of become the filing numbers, and, and so you'll probably see over the next four or five final plats for each of those little blocks as they work their way towards the northwest.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Is there any persons in the audience that would like to make a comment on this? And we have nothing online? In that case, I would consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Bear Creek Subdivision Amendment Number Four Preliminary Platte expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinance, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff concerns prior to execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
Second. I have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously with one absent. Item 16 on the agenda, the Falls at Valley Ranch South Preliminary Platte. Amy Sharp, Senior Planner.
All right, thank you again, Speaker Council. Keep our preliminary plats together, and it kind of helps answer some of your questions, maybe. All right, so this one is located just south of Ogden Road and north of Otter Road, and it's just east of Otter Pond subdivision, so it doesn't come up right next to it, but it's a little bit to the east of there. This next map will kind of show that better too. This project is approximately 130 acres. This is the entire parcel, so everything outlined in black is kind of what's called the parent parcel. And so in the next future slides, you'll be seeing that we'll have some of it that's going to be developed now, and then some of it that's going to be planned for later in the future, so they're going to be called outlots. So at this time, the developer is just proposing seven single-family residential lots. It'll be down in the southwest corner of this property, in that area that's zoned as R1. Outlot A and B will then be subdivided and developed at a later time, and it would have to come back before the Planning Commission and City Council for approval. Once again, this is a subdivision process, we're in the preliminary plat phase. I won't go over this again, we talked about this in the last presentation, so these are our subdivision review standards, and same with the comprehensive plan. And municipal code just talks about the differences between the two. This is exactly the same as the last presentation, so I won't go through that in detail. In our comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential mixed density medium, and it also includes a secondary center kind of down in the lower right corner of that area. The next slide talks about the different zoning regulations and what's allowed in these different areas. As I mentioned, at this time, the developer's just proposing seven single-family residential lots down in the R1 area. This is the very low-density district, and so it meets the intent of that zoning district. The minimum lot size requirement in the R1 zoning district is one acre, and as you'll see in the next slide on the plat, all of these lots far exceed the one-acre minimum, so. First page, as we talked about before, these are your general notes, plat notes, and all the certificates and signatures required on a plat, and this shows the area to be subdivided. So you'll see here, there's seven lots to be subdivided. There's also some different tracks, so those are kind of open space tracks that would be developed, not developed, but be maintained as open space, and usually maintained by a homeowners association, and then it shows the dedication for the road as well, it's a little cul-de-sac that accesses all these lots. And then as I mentioned, Outlot A and Outlot B are not going to be developed at this time. When they do, they'll come before you and the Planning Commission for further review. This is a zoomed-in version of the area that's to be developed. This will help show the lot sizes and shows how each one of those lots to be developed for single-family residential lots all meet the minimum lot size requirement of one acre, and then you'll see the different tracks in there as well, that are, like I mentioned, will be remaining as open space. Staff finds that the preliminary plat is in compliance with our subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan. It also meets the intent of this zoning district. The Planning Commission did vote in favor of the project on August 25th, and we are also recommending a conditional approval of this preliminary plat, and ask that in your motion, if you approve, to please include this standard condition as well that's on all of our preliminary plats. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Yeah, I've got a question. On the layout, Aspen Grove Lane leads to a cul-de-sac, and then it has like, is that a second cul-de-sac leading up to Lot 1, 2? Or is that just an access area? I'm just kind of curious where the access to Lot 1 and 2 is coming.
Sure, I'm going to let Scott speak to all the road issues on this one.
Yeah, so that one's a private drive. It's kind of a unique nuance in our code that up to four lots can be accessed from a private driveway. In this case, they're looking to take advantage of that to construct less city street, which in this case, you know, the major disadvantage is, you know, someone has to wheel their trashcan all the way down, down to the city sidewalk, but beyond, or down to the city right of way. But beyond that, it's kind of inconsequential to the city, so it'll serve as, that easement, it's, it's platted as a reciprocal access easement area where they're jointly responsible, will serve as the primary access to those lots.
So Aspen Grove is the city street that will be, with cul-de-sac, and that is all of the city street that's involved in this?
Correct, yep. They've dedicated some additional right-of-way width to finish Otter Road going east-west across the southern fringe. And then if you remember back in the annexation agreement for the larger parent parcel, we've secured the right-of-way for Bridges Drive to continue all the way down, and then Otter to continue east across this project, but those are outlaw areas right now, so until those are designed and that final footprint is finalized, that's when, you know, those would come about as part of future preliminary plans.
Excellent, thank you.
Also, Scott, as I recall, on the driveway situation, that has to be approved by the fire district in addition to the city.
Yep, they are one of the reviewers, and actually it had been modified from what they initially were looking to do based on some of the fire district feedbacks.
Any other questions? I would take any public comment. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Council accept the Planning Commission recommendation and approve the Falls at Valley Ranch South preliminary plat with the standard condition as stated in Council packet.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously with one absent. Item 17 has been removed to a later date, so we will go on to item 18, ordinance 2558 first reading. City Council consideration of ordinance on the first reading and ordinance to the City of Montrose, Colorado, vacating a portion of Pinion Way within the City of Montrose. Staff Senior Planner, Amy Sharp.
All right, I was going to try to share the vacation plat, but for some reason, when I pull it up, it becomes blank, but this is in your packet too, so hopefully you can refer to that. So we talked about this at work session back on August 16th. This is a proposed vacation that's located along Pinion Way, so this is neighboring property to the Sunshine Peak Apartments. The owner is to the south, is actually requesting that the city vacate just a portion of this right-of-way for future development of a four-plex, so the southern, southern half of this right-of-way would be vacated to that adjacent landowner, and at this time, the northern half would not be vacated, and it would be retained by the city for future potential use. And that's all I have on this one. I'll open it up to any questions.
Any questions? In case, I'll open up a public hearing. Are there any comments on the public hearing? None? I'll close the public hearing, and I'll accept a I'll close the public hearing, and I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we pass ordinance 2558 on first reading as presented.
Second. I have a motion in a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously with one absent. Item 19, ordinance 2559 on first reading. This is City Council consideration of an ordinance 2559 on first reading an ordinance to the City of Montrose, Colorado, repealing and replacing Title II, Chapter 2, Section 1, 2-1-1 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. Senior Planner, Amy Sharp.
Great, thank you very much. So this one is pretty straightforward. Our request on this one is to modify our code to update the Planning Commission members' compensation from $40 a month to $80 a month, and then the chairperson's compensation would be updated from $60 a month to $100 a month. We talked about this in work session back on August 16th, as well as some different comparables from other cities. So I won't go into those details again, but if you have any questions, maybe you can answer them.
Okay, we've covered quite a bit of that. Council, any questions on this? If not, I'll open up a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to comment on this? Anyone online? We have none? Yes, we do have one. Would you please come forward to the stand-up here and state your name and your address?
My name is Laura Baker, I live at 214 South Second Street. I really recommend if you want a diverse group of people to represent your Planning Commission council, that you offer a little bit more incentive for them to make time in their schedule. This is something I've already brought to Rossville Des, Bill Bell. I really think you need to consider it, because this Planning Commission, as great as it is, needs a little bit of support from a diverse perspective. So please, at minimum, if you can bring a little bit more funds to people who could be losing out on their daily wages, do it. This is just a public perspective, someone that does not want to be on your commission, but did consider it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would care to comment? I have no other comment, I'll close the hearing. Any additional discussion on Council?
I'm glad we're making this happen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to pass ordinance 2559 on first reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously with one absent. Item 20, staff reports. Mr. Bill, do you have anything, or Ann? Chief, do you have any comments? We have none? In that case, I'll go to the Council for comments. Nobody's even gonna comment on our new attire?
You know, youth council...
Let me, let me take the opportunity then. I would like to count, to thank Councilwoman Bynum for the marvelous design of these shirts. Did a great job, thank you.
Well, Kaylee really designed it. I am, I stole a little inspiration from the town of Steamboat Springs. Their council does a lot of outreach to their community, and does it wearing matching blue polo shirts in the case of Steamboat. And I think we have a council that's really working well together and wants to engage our community more, and I thought it would be a way we could take a page maybe out of our youth council notebook. They always look so good when they wear their youth council logo wear, that we could do it as part of our outreach to the community when we're out there.
And matches our eyes.
Your eyes? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
And I just wanted to say, I'm really excited to see the youth council candidates come out, that we have some really great kids coming forward, and I really look forward to working with them for the next year.
Absolutely.
I think we do have some great folks there, and I think that we had a good turnout for the Planning Commission alternate position. We had some great candidates for that, so I think that's really super to see the support. Are there any other comments? I would take...
Apparently our time's up anyway.
Oh, no.
I'd move to adjourn.
If not, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
That's just it.
We have a motion, we are adjournment. Thank you, everyone.